All right. The time is now 7:00 PM and I call to order the Northborough School Committee meeting, open meeting of Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. We have a pretty moderate agenda tonight, so nothing too outrageous. It's a two-seltzer night, so when the seltzers are gone, it should be done. We've seen longer, we've seen shorter. With that said, I guess we'll jump right into the first order of business is action on minutes. Action on the open meeting minutes of September 4th, 2019. So last minute. I will entertain a motion for those.
I motion to approve the Northborough School Committee open meeting minutes from Wednesday, September 4th.
Second?
I second.
Sure. We'll give it to Kelly.
So we do have one recommended edit.
Oh, we do. Okay.
On page three, the last bullet. It reads, "The new electronic health manager and the lead control kits." It should read bleed.
Bleed.
Control kits.
Lead control kits.
Okay. Any other amendments or discussion?
Then my recommendation would be to vote the minutes separately because we want to vote the, approve the minutes and retain executive session minutes.
Sure. Perfect. So any further discussion about the open meeting minutes of September 4th? Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Okay.
And next, I would vote to retain the executive session meeting minutes from Wednesday, September 4th, 2019.
Can I clarify that, to approve and retain?
Yes, to approve and retain.
Any discussion?
None.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Motion passed and the minutes are approved and retained. All right, moving along, the next order of business is the Northborough Education Foundation presentation.
I'd like to invite Noel Sylvia up, President of NEF, to share the great work NEF has accomplished over the past year. So welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And Michelle, can you, Julie can just... We want to make sure NEF is very comfortable because they donate so much to us.
Thank you for inviting me tonight. For those of you who are not familiar with Northborough Education Foundation, we're a volunteer-run organization that helps finance across the ordinary curriculum and staff development projects, as well as student services and activities, special programs and equipment purchases that fall outside of the annual school budget. We raise our money with a variety of different fundraising events, which include the Applefest Gala, the Gala Junior, team trivia night, the mother-daughter princess tea party, and the Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, which we run three times a year. It can go all year, but those are typically the times. These efforts are bolstered further by corporate support. We have a platinum sponsor who's been with us now for two years, Sullivan Christ Financial. That's run by Carrie Sullivan Christ and she's been so generous in helping us fund the grants that we fund and supporting us. So this year, we funded over $66,000 and there were 16 grants that were for the Northborough Schools and the community. Each year, we have a theme that hopes to inspire ideas. It's not necessary that the grants we get pertain to this theme, it just is something just to spark ideas. So this year, our theme was Taking a Team Approach. So we were asking that applicants think about ideas that encourage teamwork amongst students, departments and the schools. And we've, we found that we did get quite a few grants that went all across the school. So it wasn't just for a specific school, it would apply to all elementary schools. Or in the case of one, that we granted to the Northborough/Southborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council in conjunction with Melican Middle School and the elementary school libraries to update and enhance the current collection of books about specific disabilities and that have strong characters with specific disabilities in hopes to promote understanding and acceptance of all of our differences. Another grant that we provided was to all of the elementary schools to build upon a curriculum by including materials such as scripts, downloadable music lessons, plans, activities, props, lighting and sound equipments, so that the schools could build on their performance programs and their drama programs. Melican Middle School was awarded a grant for a project that was geared towards social emotional learning content and experiences for the staff and students through the arts. So this uses various media, including drawing, painting, photography, video production, drama, music and dance. Another grant that we provided funds for was for the Algonquin Business Department. They have, they built what's called a think tank and they needed furniture that could help the students kind of work together. And they, it was very successful last year, so they again applied this year, so we were able to fund more so that they could build it out, so that more students and faculties could, could benefit from it. One last one I want to talk about is every year, we grant what's called the Northborough Children's Book Award, and that's done through the Northborough Public Library, as well as all the elementary schools. This is aimed at inspiring the third, fourth and fifth grade. So what it does is, is the faculty chooses at least 12 different books from new authors and introduces them to the children. So the children then, I think it happens more in the spring, is that when they start it? So it starts more in the spring and what they do is they, they have the ability to get these books out of the library. And for each child who reads three books, they're allowed to vote on their favorite book. And then they actually get to take one home, which my kids love. So last year's winning book was The Cardboard Kingdom by an author named Chad Sell. So that's been very successful throughout the years. I gave Greg a few lists of all 16 of the grants. I figured I wouldn't spend my whole time talking about all 16 grants, but, but that's it.
So on behalf of the district, I just want to thank NEF for its great work and partnership and I think students benefit. And I was very inspired by all the grants that were awarded. And I think it's also providing an opportunity for teachers to collaborate.
Yes.
But also bringing innovation to our students, which is outstanding. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Yes. On behalf of the school committee, I'd like to echo those sentiments. It's grateful is an understatement. It's a really impressive list of a variety of very relevant projects, so we certainly appreciate all the support and to all of those in the community who helped make it happen, because I know there's a lot to get to this point. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving right along, the next order of business is the Melican Middle School Improvement Plan and PTO presentation. We're getting a presentation from Principal Carb on the 2019 to 2021 School Improvement Plan.
Ms. Bean, do you want to go?
Yes, I can see. As we have here.
So Pragya is our PTO co-treasurer, so she has offered to share tonight some of the great work that the PTO does. I think the middle school benefits greatly from our PTO, and though our PTO runs differently than the elementary PTOS, there's a lot of wonderful work that happens behind the scenes, as well as with students. So thank you for coming, Pragya.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
I usually have the idea about what the PTO does from the treasurer's point of view, rather than the co-chairs' point of view, because they know more about it. But what I know is that we provide funds for the field trips, sponsor the enrichment programs that we run, and we also grant some scholarships to the students who cannot afford for some field trips or the supplies, school supplies and whatnot, and grants to the teachers sometimes. So our major fundraiser that we run is based on asking for direct donations from the parents, which we started last year. Before that, we used to do the magazine drive, which was not so popular among anyone. So, we happened to raise a good $12,000 with just the direct donations from the parents, which was a great achievement on part of our PTO, as in it was less work, but more rewards. Our other fundraising events are, we get some money through the school pictures and a majority of our income comes through the Bay State Textiles Recycling, which is about $1,000 or so. So overall, we could raise about $16,000 this past year. And we spend all this money in providing enrichment programs to the kids, like the author's visit, the speaker's visit on either anti-bullying or substance abuse, or being responsible to social media, preparing them for high school. There are other enrichment programs like Bentley University Model UN and the Shakespeare Now. I think Ms. Bean would be able to tell more about it, what it is, and Poetry Company. Field trips are usually whatever we get from the students, they are there, and we just provide for the scholarship for the kids if they have any. The other money that we went through us was for the stone trip for the sixth graders, which is not happening the next year, so, but this year, but that, that accounts for about $5,000, $6,000 from us. The enrichment programs that I talked about also account for about $6,000 from us. And this year, we had given the teachers grant and staff support and about $7,000 towards that, which included money for the outdoor classroom or kindness program. There were other things like providing, grant to the nurse for the snacks for the students and for the festivals like French class or books for the library and all that stuff. So overall, we spent about $14,000 on the school community. That's, that's it. That's all.
That's a lot.
That is there to say. Yeah.
Excellent.
So.
So thank you. And again, it's another example of a great partnership and parents helping out and families, you know, making sure that our students have what they need. And I know Principal Carb really appreciates the extra revenue and opportunities for students. So, and it, it's not easy work.
So I had a question about how you changed your fundraising tactics. I believe it was last year when you presented, I think it was rolled out around the holidays. You had some sort of form where kids would send it home to their families and say, hey, we're not doing a magazine drive this year, please donate directly. What, you said that it was a success. What's the difference between the magazine drive funds that you've raised in the past compared to this past year?
So we had seen that there was a huge dip in the interest for, from the student's point of view, as well as the parent's point of view, in participating into the magazine drive. And it took a lot of effort on the side of the parent volunteers to keep it going for the 21 days that it went on. It was a lot of time going into it. So the year before last, we decided that we would give parents two options, that either to participate in the magazine drive or just give us direct donations. So from the magazine drive, whatever money we would get, whatever items they would be selling in, we would get 40% off of that, but the donations were 100% ours. And a lot of parents preferred to give us the donations, rather than buying something that they really didn't want. So I think last year, we raised around $14,000, out of which $7,500 were from direct donations. And just $6,500 were from the magazine drive. So that's when we decided that it's a good way to go towards just asking for direct donations, because that might help us more towards it. And that's how we did it this year, and it worked. So.
Awesome.
It was less work on the part of the parents, yes. And we, no one had to come in every day and, you know, do the tallies and who has sold what, who has not sold what, and all that stuff. So it was obviously less work from the parents' point of view as well.
Thank you so much for sharing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Much appreciated.
So I asked Gretchen to join us tonight, Gretchen Bean. I know she was here last month as well, but one of our school improvement plan goals is connected to literacy, so I thought it would make sense for Gretchen to be here. And also, she is on our school council. I also asked Jen to join us, our assistant principal, Jen Callahan, because one of our goals is around school culture, school climate and discipline. So Jen leads a committee that has really sort of spearheaded that work. So I thought if there were questions, who better to ask than the people who are leading this work? So hopefully that's okay. And I'm wondering if I should sit to present, so that people can, I think it's easier to hear. Is that okay with people?
Seems fine.
Okay. So I know everybody has a copy of this. I did notice a typo, so I made new copies, but if you want them, I'll hand them out. So, you know, the first part is just lists our, our school council and we have, I'm excited that Leslie Rutan has agreed to stay with us as our community representative. She's been connected to the school for a number of years. And so I'm thrilled that she's willing to continue this journey with us. And then you can see the rest of the people on the committee, so I have to thank all of them for their work. We did work last spring to think about and reflect on what we had done and to think about where we wanted to go. And then we met over the summer as an academic council and a leadership team to try to sort of hone in on the goals that we wanted to focus on. And then our school council met to really kind of solidify what we're, what we wanted to do. So just like with all the other school improvement plans from the other schools, ours is tied to the strategic plan, the district strategic plan, and incorporates the four areas of strategic focus, communication, curriculum, student support services and technology. So one of the things that I think is, is, it's exciting to think about. It also can be hard, is to really sort of focus on what you want to do as a school. And I think there's, there's no shortage of initiatives, certainly. There's no shortage of good work happening, but how to really focus as a whole school and really hone in on what we identify as areas that we can continue to grow in and that we can have sort of benchmarks to measure our growth. So we decided to focus on three areas, after looking at some of our data and getting feedback from other, from teachers. So one of the areas is literacy, and again, I know we presented about that last week. And the second one is around data and feedback. And then the third one is around school climate and discipline. So those are the three goal areas. So the first goal is about students being able to read and write with proficiency at grade level across all content areas. And, you know, proficiency can be defined in a lot of different ways, but we are defining it in reading, using the QRI, and we're defining it in writing, using a DESE-influenced rubric. So I'm getting a little ahead of myself, because we've already done a lot of work. But we're excited about this, very excited about it. And I think one of the, one of the reasons that we have really decided as a school community to focus on literacy is that we have noticed that over the years, we have seen students who are not reading at least at grade level and/or writing at least at grade level. And sometimes that can be mistaken for a learning disability. Sometimes it can be mistaken for a lack of motivation in students. And one or both of those two things can really impair a student's ability to access the curriculum across their school day and across the year. So we really feel like that's an area where we need to do some growth and some work. We know that the elementary school has more benchmark assessments that they, that they do to track students, and we really felt like this was an area where we could grow. So that's one of the reasons. And another reason is just this general trend of middle and high school kids not to read, not to engage in independent reading. And we know that research shows that there are significant benefits to that. So those two things together are really driving this goal and are helping us think about how we want our students to look across all content areas. So some of the ways that we're going to implement include, you know, we are administering the QRI, our literacy teachers are doing that, at least to get some, some starting data. And we are assessing independent reading level and instructional reading level, because those can look very different. And that data is important for us to have across all content areas. And we are noticing some interesting things. Some students who are not on IEPs that are at least presenting in this particular assessment as having some struggles. So in some students who are reading at the high school level. So it certainly is eye-opening and gives us a nice data point and a place to start. Also, you know, we are, again, we've talked about the independent reading last month, and we're doing a lot of work on that. Students are reading and they are in a habit of reading now, and our kids are all carrying a book around with them, which is a shift for us, so that's exciting. I am seeing students in the guidance area, even when they're taking a break, rather than be on an electronic device, they are actually reading a book. And that's, that's a change for us, so that's, that's wonderful. Teachers are talking to students about what they're reading personally, and that's exciting as well. It's a nice way for us all to connect to one another. We also are collaborating. Our literacy teachers have been into classrooms, several classrooms already, talking with students about the benchmark writing assignment that they gave. Everybody took the same writing assessment and they're able to talk with students about that and what that means for them. They've been in even phys ed and phys ed class, helping students write goals. They've been in social studies and science, just across the board, which is exciting. And students are saying, oh, there's that literacy person. So it certainly is felt by students and staff alike. We have teachers asking the literacy teachers to co-teach with them for a day or two, or sometimes to take over and model for them how to teach a certain writing strategy. So we're already seeing benefits of that, and we're excited to continue that work. And to present, the literacy team is going to present to faculty and staff, to faculty in November, sort of to share data about the QRI and what that means, to talk about the intervention groups that they're going to be running, and to ask them for feedback, so that we are sharing data and getting feedback along the way, so that we continue to grow and improve in the ways that we're supporting students and teachers. So there's some exciting work. These are just some pictures that sort of, you know, one of our bulletin boards says today, a reader, tomorrow, a leader, and we're trying to really help students sort of embody that. And I know you can't see all these pictures, but in the upper left, there are actually three adults in that classroom. One of them is the social studies teacher, that's the classroom that it is, and one of them is actually an ELA teacher, and they are co-teaching. They're co-teaching one group of kids every single day, and they are really focusing on reading and writing techniques and skills. And the social studies teacher is able to transfer and use those techniques across all of the classes that she sees. So that's pretty exciting. That's just an example of that. The far right is actually the art room, the top right, and those are students engaging in silent reading, independent reading during one of their flex blocks. So it's happening throughout the school. The bottom right is a small group reading class, and then the bottom left is a teacher administering the QRI. Our second goal is about data, and there's no shortage of data. But I think what gets tricky is what we actually do with the data and how we analyze the data and what stories we glean from the data that we have. So it's easy to get overwhelmed by data and to sort of not have a course of action. So we feel like we can do a better job looking at data and using that data to inform our work. And, you know, we've been using Canvas now for a full year. Canvas is our learning management system, and it's a wonderful tool for providing students' feedback. But there are a lot of tools that we don't exactly know how to best implement. So we are working on really exploring those tools and making sure that we are providing kids with timely and meaningful feedback, so that they can continue to grow and learn. Additionally, there's certainly no shortage of MCAS data, and it's, it is a moment in time when kids are tested, but there's a lot of data there, and there are some different things that we can learn from that data and plans that we can put in place to move forward as a school and in the content areas. So we have, of course, we have our own school data as well. We give a lot of common assessments, and I think the next step is what do we do after and what do we do with that data? So that's where we are now. So in order to implement this goal and to make progress, we, again, our literacy teachers are offering in-class support across the board, which is helpful. We are working in Canvas to administer more assessments that way and offer more immediate feedback to students. There's plenty of, as I said, data about MCAS in Edwin Analytics. And one of our ELA teachers has a couple of periods in her day where she's really digging into the data and really working on how to help the rest of us tackle some of the data that's available to us. So she presented to the academic council this week, and she and I are going to co-present to the faculty on Monday, to get people to really look holistically at the data, what are one or two stories that this data shows us about the Melican Middle School and its students, so that it, we all own it. The art teacher owns it, the tech engineering teacher owns it, the nurse owns it, these are all of our students. So let's look at them at a whole, as a whole, and see what stories are told. What is, what does our economically disadvantaged group look like? What URLs look like? What story can we glean from this data? So she's working on really establishing some protocol to analyze data and to ask questions that will help give us the information that we need. From there, we will be doing work in the content area, so the ELA MCAS, the math MCAS, the science tech engineering MCAS, and we will be digging in deeper around the content in analyzing that. But we want to start as a whole school, so that everybody is part of it and owns it. We also think that, we know that a student's ELA score, for example, has ramifications in social studies and in science. Math score, you can feel that across the board as well. So it's important for all of us, and so we are really embracing that data, along with other data that we have available to us. These are just pictures of, you know, staff members, adults and students analyzing and looking at data. And again, there's no shortage of data, we know that, but we also know that as a school, we really need to focus on certain pieces of data, certain data points, and have an action plan for what we're going to do with the information. And then finally, our third goal is around behavior. So the goal is about implementing consistent positive behavioral interventions and restorative discipline practices. So there's a need for us to really articulate what we are doing with students and how we're responding to them when they make mistakes, how we're empowering them, how we're holding them accountable, and how we're helping them restore and, and make up for what they did in a way that has meaning for them and empowers them. So we have been working toward this for a number of years, but we need to sort of streamline what we're doing and articulate it with the help of students and staff. So that's our plan for this year. Jen started a school climate and discipline committee last year, which was wonderful, was a volunteer committee. And they began sort of looking at past practices for us and looking at some of the research. There's a book called Shifting Gears, and I did note it in, in the plan. Jen and I went to some, a full-day training on that and on the process. And so we've been trying to implement and trying to coach teachers around that. There's a lot more work to be done. Additionally, we have a few teachers that have advanced degrees in positive behavioral intervention and supports. And so this is an opportunity for these two groups to sort of come together. We have sort of two things going on. We have the school climate and discipline committee really looking at and digging into restorative practices, and we have PBIS group that is really working on matrices and different ways of doing work with kids. Those two groups, this is an opportunity for them to merge and to really articulate what we are. what we are doing with kids and how, when they make mistakes, it's a learning process, and what are steps that we go through with students, keeping in mind that all students are different and need something a little bit different. So, um, you know, there's, we've already been working on some of our matrices, and, um, our P B I S group has done some training with the staff. Our school climate and discipline committee did some work with staff last year and implemented a survey to get some baseline data, um, and, but there's much more work to be done. Um, in the bottom left, that's just a, a picture of a training that we're going to go to this year, um, so that we can get everybody using the same language, adults and students. Um, and then these are just, you know, pictures of kids, being kids, um, in different areas where, um, we know that although the spaces where kids are learning, um, are different, our expectations are the same, and, um, helping all teachers and all students just, uh, use the same language, respond in a similar way, and help students own the mistakes that they make and fix them. That's what, um, that's what our goal is. Um, and then, finally, just some pictures of students doing what the students do. So, we're looking forward to a great year, and, um, thank you to Jen and to Gretchen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Um, thank you for your presentation. Um, I really like how you thought about what you needed to focus on, um, and especially with the data, there is a lot of data out there, choosing what data to focus on. So, I had a question about, um, implementing, um, the, looking at the data. Are you going to be doing that as a school? Will you be breaking that down by department and figuring out what, what data and what assessments each department should be focusing on?
So, both. So, we, um, I, so, E L A, math, science, tech, engineering, they've already looked at individual scores and students, because when the data's ready, they, that's what they, they do kind of on their own. But we want to start as a whole school first and pick a couple of data points that, that tell a story. So, I was meeting with Meg Popolo, she's leading a lot of this work, but she was saying, "Oh, I'd like to give these two graphs." There's just so many graphs. So, I think if we can hone in on two or three different graphs that paint a picture. And I said, "Wow, look at this group, look at the difference between the boys and the girls." That's just a simple thing, but look at the difference in growth over the year, um, in this category, look at this. So, we are working to do some work with everybody as a whole. So, we'll start out as a whole group with a presentation, um, and working on finalizing sort of our data analysis protocol. Then they will break into small groups, but mixed content areas, just to kind of get used to talking about and looking at that kind of data differently. And then from there, there will be work, um, that the E L A group will do, that the math group will do. Um, so, it's going to be both, and I think that we're going to be, um, we have the opportunity because we have somebody who can dedicate a couple of periods a day to really kind of pushing this with us. So, I think we have an opportunity to get more information than we ever have from M C A S, remembering that that's just one moment in time. And then the other data that, um, that we are trying to look more closely at is the data that common assessments that we administer actually give. So, if we have two eighth-grade science teachers and they give the same science test, for example, the pre-assessment and the post-assessment, the time for them to actually sit and go through, "How did your students do?" "What question did students seem to get wrong?" That's something that we need to do some more work on. So, to answer your question, it's sort of all of the above, um, but chipping away at it slowly, so that we don't overwhelm people.
Thank you so much. I do have one other question.
Go ahead.
So, I really liked the last goal, um, just about, um, implementing positive behaviors, and I know that we've talked a lot about social and emotional learning. Um, how do you see that transition from the elementary school to the middle school? I know sixth graders are very different from eighth graders in terms of their development. Is there any plan for communication about verbiage used in the elementary schools, um, as they transition to middle school?
Um, we, what we do know is that there is some language that is used at the elementary level, um, that we hear, you know, sometimes as they transition to sixth grade, like zones, like what zone they're in. Um, we don't necessarily use that exact same language, and, you know, we try to adapt our language to how we're going to address them here. Um, but a communication between, you know, among all the schools is going to be very important. Um, one thing that we did find out directly from the survey that we did with staff and students is that we really want to work on consistency. That was a big word that popped up, um, regarding common language and how we address a mistake and how we help students fix it. Um, so that's something that we'd want to discuss with our fellow principals, um, how we can show when those kids transition from fifth grade into the big middle school, you know, what our expectations are and how we can be consistency as a staff and administration for them to, you know, feel comfortable, um, but also learn the language and the expectations and the culture of the school. So, there's definitely work to be done there.
Great, thank you.
With all this focus on data, and thank you, of course, for all the presentation, the goals are very thoughtful. Um, I find them very relevant to issues today. Um, with all the talk about data, I'm curious if you're, it's always harder with behavior to quantify, you know, um, the complexity of students' behavior. But were you able to identify any data points? I heard something about, for example, suspension rates. So, is there some baseline that you're looking at, so we'll know if, uh, Goal Three is making progress and meaningful change?
Yes, you can. Sure, you go. So, actually, I think that's a great question, and we have, you know, every year we do track, suspension data is something that's very concrete to track. We're also trying to track, um, how many times kids are sent out of class, for example, to the office, um, how many, like, detentions kids are receiving and sort of. So, those are things that we have really, um, since I've been, so in over twenty years, we've really moved away from those sorts of responses, but there are times when those are still necessary, but we do think that there's preventative work that we can do so that we don't get to those points with kids. Um, so, if you look over years, there, I can think about many years ago when we had maybe forty-five suspensions in a year, which seems like a lot, internal and external combined. And I think there was a year when we only had ten suspensions. Now, there are times when you have to suspend a student if he's a threat to himself or others, or if, you know, there's certain things, but I think we have made a real concerted effort there. Um, and so I do think that the data shows that, but Jen has the more recent data, and that is something that's important, is the, the suspension rate, and it's kind of an easy thing to, to track. Um, there's a lot more that we need to track in terms of data. Um, like I said, kids being sent out, how much class are they missing because they missed, things like that, but. So, one thing that we learned from this conference that we attended two summers ago is that, you know, we, we want to help them repair and restore, so that's that restorative piece. And tracking data last year, it was very obvious that after you had that kind of conversation with the student, sometimes part of that repair and the restoring was that you would have the student sit down with the teacher, and you'd kind of mediate and kind of coach them through the situation. And what was nice about tracking that kind of data is that if I had tracked maybe that one incident in that particular student, then looking back throughout the year, that was the only time I saw he or she, um, or, or any, any student. And that's really nice data that I didn't do maybe two, three years earlier, but knowing how to track behavior, it is tricky, uh, but it's nice when you can look back and say, "Okay, that intervention or that response to that student to repair and restore, uh, the relationship really works." Um, and the other part of receiving and looking at that data, it's really nice to help us, you know, as an administration and staff, focus on connectiveness with the students and how they can continue to build relationships. We've noticed over the past couple of years, you know, teachers through clubs and activities and sports and just even in their classroom and engaging with students, um, they've helped build their relationships, so that's also helped with decreasing, um, you know, behaviors that we've seen, uh, in the past. So, we'll just continue to track that everyday kind of data and see how the responses that teachers have made or administration has made, and continue with that to make sure, um, we're on point and try to be consistent.
Yeah, as the survey you did to staff, maybe something could be repeated that would show change?
Yes, yep.
I would also add that we have the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey, which we've been administering for many years. So, we have longitudinal data that actually really is, has been invaluable in terms of looking at, you know, impacts to programs that we've implemented to students. Um, so that's some, and we just received the, the survey results.
And that, the Metro West is always a connecting point for us when it comes to a committee like the school climate. Um, some of those big items that they try to survey students are, are still things that we're trying to figure out here at the school level. So, it's nice to bridge those two together in the school climate discipline committee with what we receive from data from the Metro West Health Survey and the P B I S. So, it's all working together, and hopefully, you know, it is deep-rooted in helping the students grow, um, which is always the goal, but, and move on and become, you know, members of society.
So, that's still going? Does that have a certain time when it stops, that, the Metro West?
Every two years.
I think they just reauthorized, uh, to continue the, the process.
And that's been very helpful for us, because, you, you know, there, we focused on bullying for a number of years, using that data to sort of bring in programming to help, not that that's perfect, but I think it gives us a good starting point. So, I think school connectedness and how students are feeling, um, about how they're treated is really important data for us to look at, um, because they're self-reporting and they're as reliable as anybody else who takes a survey, so it's, it's been really, really helpful to us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gretchen.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Pragya.
All right, moving right along, uh, that brings us to the M A S C and M A S S Joint Conference, um, discussion and appointing of delegates.
So, it's hard to believe the conference is rapidly approaching. Um, it's always a great event and a great opportunity for school committees and superintendents to learn together. Um, so this year, the conference is November sixth through the ninth, and as part of the conference, um, the committee, the resolution committee usually puts forth resolutions for the school committees to vote on. This year, there are nine resolutions. Um, two of, or there are a couple of note, and the first one is Resolution Number One, ban, banning polystyrene from schools, and this is just something that I think is important based on the work of Shrava Tankala, who presented this at the town meeting, um, this past spring. So, Northborough is already ahead of the curve, so that, that is important. Resolution Number Three is school transportation. So, what we're finding across the Commonwealth is that, um, when we go out for bids for transportation, we're, districts are finding that there are very few, um, bus contractors aware of bidding. Um, so, Resolution Three basically promotes for more, uh, competition and higher quality of service, and this is the fifth year of our transportation contract, so we will be going out for, uh, transportation bid, um, this winter. Um, and again, it just speaks to the lack of competition in terms of the transportation market. Um, it also speaks to, um, there's a mass general law that says that we can provide our own transportation and have our own in-house transportation, but it does not allow us to partner with surrounding communities, so we could not partner with Marlboro or Westboro in having our own transportation company, per se. And this resolution would provide an opportunity for us actually to, to look at things a little bit differently. Um, so those are two, um, resolutions that I think are noteworthy of, um, and pertinent to some of the things that we're working on here in, in Northborough. And we also need to.
Quick question about Resolution Three, is that something that the Asa Valley Collaborative? Has there been discussions about?
So, this prevents the Asa Valley Collaborative from being able to compete against private transportation companies. So, if this resolution were to pass and the law were to change, potentially, we could look at a regional transportation hub at Asa Valley Collaborative, um, and have our own transportation system.
Thank you.
So, as part of, um, the conference, um, we're required to vote a delegate to actually, um, vote on the resolutions. That takes place on, um, Friday, November eighth, and we have to have this form in by the eighteenth. Um, so I'm not sure if there's anyone who's willing to, um, represent the committee as the delegate, and we also need them to alternate. And we can change at the last minute, we can also call and let them know if there's a change in our, in our voting delegate.
Not able to, not for lack of interest, but I'll be away on work travel, so. To delegate those who are not present.
Um, that, I would, I would make a motion to nominate the people who aren't present.
So, I think.
I mean, not to be mean, but.
My recommendation is, as long as we.
We need to submit names, and then we can always change it when it gets closer, if schedules change, but, um, again, I, I'm trying to do my best to try to be able to get there, but.
Have you represented last year?
I did, I did, I did, so.
Tag, you're a. Um, I can look at my schedule, however, starting a new job this year, I don't know if it would be of best interest. I also think that might be the same date as the Massachusetts Science Teachers Association Conference. And I know that I might be there, so.
You can't be in two places at once.
I know, I don't know, so.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Perhaps Joan and.
Joan and Susan.
Joan primary and.
Susan as an alternate.
Joan Frank. She can pull herself away from her granddaughter.
Yes, congratulations, Charlie.
All right, so we'll entertain a motion to, to appoint the aforementioned delegates on our behalf.
Did I make the motion, or did you make the motion?
I'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to nominate Joan Frank for representative and alternate delegate, um, Susan Lawrence.
I second the motion.
Declare that's for the M A S C or M A S S.
Yes.
Annual conference.
M A S C.
See, twenty nineteen. Um, so we have motion and second, all those in favor?
Thanks, Joan and Susan. Thanks, Joan and Susan.
We shall see. All right. We are down to Old Business, which includes a review of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty School Committee Subcommittee Liaison Assignments, which is in the packet. Do you recall if changes were made based on this?
We received a, a couple, Cheryl Lepry received a couple responses, so there are a few updates, but for the most part, the document is, is pretty complete.
Could we ever follow up with, um, Mrs. Crass about that?
We did, yes.
And.
She's willing.
She wants to stay on?
Yep.
Any other comments, questions?
And is there any unfilled that we need to fill? I think we got everything right.
All the essentials are accounted for.
Yeah, I think we added the pre-K twelve music study group, so I think we are.
That's right. Yeah, it looks up to date. This doesn't require a vote.
No.
All right, one cell's gone. And down to the superintendent's report to the committee, enrollments.
So, um, so enrollments as of, don't speed up. As of September twenty-third, um, have remained fairly stable. Um, we have, uh, welcomed two new students since the last presentation, and we have a total enrollment of one thousand five hundred and eighty-six, uh, students. Um, and it's important to note that N E S D E C projection, um, was projected to be at one thousand five hundred and sixty, so we are, um, very close. We also, on the enrollment report, added a, um, column, a row for N E S D E C projections, so we can keep, keep tracking it as we look at enrollment changes over time. And it's also important to note, of our fifty-two, uh, elementary classrooms, ten are capped right now, at the class size limit.
So it looks like it's settling this time of year?
Yes.
NASDAQ was close, but it's noteworthy that it was under. They tend to be on that side when they're off.
And we had increased enrollment at the kindergarten level, which is, I think, noteworthy. So also in your packet is the FY19 budget revised final, and I'll let Becky speak for that.
So we brought forward a final FY19 budget last month, and this is a revised budget. Working with the town accountant, we were able to apply $5,139.77 to the remaining balance for FY19. So now that leaves us with a balance of $3,637.33. So we appreciate all the hard work and collaboration with Jason Little and his team.
Where does that money come from? Like, what, is it just from?
So, I mean, I think in terms of savings.
Savings like the boiler?
Exactly. So, I mean, it's a, you know, multimillion dollar budget, so when we balance out the budget at the end of the year, we try to get to zero, but there are times when we don't. And whatever money is left over goes to the town's general fund. And the town was very generous and aligned us to use some of that money to pay, to pay a bill that we had not anticipated.
And that bill was for FY19 or 20?
FY19.
Okay. So I'm just making sure. So the usual practice, this hasn't happened the last few years, so I'm just, the usual practice is that the funds go back into the town's general?
Yeah.
So this is an exception that was made, basically, based on our request?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So I'll also have Becky share the FY20 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report.
So at this time FY20, our balance is $1.1 million. So that's a 4.61% remaining on the budget. We've encumbered many things for the upcoming year, salaries being the biggest portion of our budget, obviously. Last year at this time, we, we had $916,000 remaining on the bottom line, or 3.78%. So we are tracking a little bit ahead of where we were last year, but we're pretty close to, and we continue to monitor.
And we'll need a vote, a roll call vote for FY19.
So, yeah, I'll entertain motions separately for these two items. So the first is for the FY19 Budget Revised.
I'll make a motion to accept the revised FY19, 2019 budget as revised until-
Until audit. Excellent, thank you.
I second that motion.
Very good. Any further discussion about the FY19 budget, the motion on the table? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And a motion for the FY20 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as presented, please.
I move to approve until audited the FY2020 Budget Monthly General Fund Expenditure as of September 30th, 2019.
Seconded. Further discussion, questions? Excellent. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
So the next item in your pocket here, packet is the FY21 Budget Goals. So these have not been updated since last year, so entertain a conversation with the committee around updating these to reflect budget priorities for FY21. The leadership team has started the budget process for FY21, and we've spent time talking about priorities. We try to budget around priorities, and this guiding document is, is very key in terms of the work that we do. When the leadership team met, we are aligned with the priorities that are listed. And one of the recommendations I would make is the last bullet, which talks about the feasibility of transitioning to a tuition-free kindergarten program. We've already determined the feasibility and are underway, so I think rewriting that to reflect where we are in terms of implementation.
Yeah, I mean, continue. Implementation of transition or something along those lines, whatever language.
So implement transition to a-
Sure, that's more, that's more succinct.
Implement, what do you say, the implements the transition of?
Transition to.
Or the transition plan to-
Either way.
Yep.
Okay.
Are we about to, we're about to redo the strategic plan?
We are. So this year, we are reauthorizing our strategic plan. So in April and May, we hope to bring a plan forth to the combined committee for approval. But the revision 2020 is still a plan that we refer to in thinking about our budget priorities.
I mean, my, my position at this point is that this is getting a bit stale, but it, I think the most logical time to overhaul it is at the time of, you know, coinciding mostly with the reauthorization of the strategic plan. So unless there are other ideas, my, my thought at this point would be to mostly leave it as is with the minor revision and move to completely overhaul in tandem with the new strategic plan.
For next year?
Correct.
Makes sense, I think, especially since there's been nothing presented largely that we want to prioritize this year.
I think one thing, moving forward, whether it be for this year or for future years, something that I've heard a lot is that our incoming classes in preschool and kindergarten speak a wide variety of languages, and that's a need that we're going to foresee as they get older and filter up into the elementary schools and then the middle school and high school. So I do think that that may be a goal for the future. In looking at these goals, you know, it's sort of encompassed in meet the needs of all learners, so it is encompassed in other goals. But perhaps maybe with our next strategic plan, perhaps that could be a focus as well.
Yeah, I anticipate that some very specific things will come out of that process with reauthorizing the plan, to be honest, that will be fairly compelling to put into consideration for budget goals moving forward.
And although these budget goals are broad and they connect to a lot of the work that we do, I think the more specific we can be, and I think the last bullet around transitioning to a tuition-free kindergarten is very specific and, and we can measure progress toward. So, you know, I look forward to that process of reauthorizing the plan and actually really thinking about what the budget goals will be for next year.
And when does that happen?
So we'll start that in the next couple of weeks, and it will take three to four months to, to have a draft.
And is that something done mostly through the central office and then-
So we'll, we'll have a strategic planning steering committee, and then we'll have community forums and surveys. We'll collect a lot of input and feedback from educators, all stakeholders, and then a smaller authoring team will come together and draft the goals. And then we'll get the draft out back to the community for input and feedback, and then bring it back, refine it, and then present it to the combined committee. Also, a lot of opportunity for input and feedback from key stakeholders.
Great.
Quick and easy, like most things. So from what I can tell, there'll be plenty of opportunity for us to participate throughout that process.
And school committees, absolutely.
I've never done one on the, on my time in the committee. Okay. Anything else? Don't believe this requires a vote this time. Yes, actually, we, we-
We have voted in the past.
Yeah, moving forward with this, as discussed, with some minor language changes.
My only comment would be if we wanted to wait until the November meeting to vote and with the chair not present and Joan Frank, that is an option. It doesn't hold us up from our work moving forward.
There won't create any urgency at this time?
I think, you know, I think from hearing the conversation, goals most likely won't change too dramatically, except it's the will of the committee.
I'm for giving an opportunity to the senior members to chime in if they, if they feel the need to make any adjustments before it gets voted, so.
Sure, I would be okay with that.
It's okay. All right, there's no motion. It's deferred. We'll put on the, add that to the future agenda items.
So in your packet, you also have the FY21 Proposed Budget Calendar. So on September 16th, we had power building tours. So we had a great tour from Principal Carb of Melkin School and from Principal Wright of Lincoln Street School. And it was a great opportunity to see the great work of our facilities teams and also talk about capital plan improvement projects as we move forward. We had members of the school committee, the select board, and also the town administrator who joined those visits. And I thought, I found it very informative and a nice opportunity to showcase the hard work of our custodial team.
Well, thank you for organizing. That went through the central office, so it's always appreciated.
And then we'll add dates as, as we move forward with the budget process. And that is my report to the-
The ever-present budget calendar?
Yes.
Proposed?
Proposed.
Strongly proposed.
Yes.
Here for-
And there are several doodle polls out, looking for some dates for some capital planning subcommittee meetings, so be on the lookout for those.
Very good. Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. Moving along to educational policy. Yep, there's none at this time. We do have policy development or distribution. So this is the approved, this was discussed at last meeting, I believe, this is the visitation observation policy that had some required changes and alignments.
Correct. So it was more about consistency in uniform practice across our elementary and middle school. So this meets that, those requirements, and our handbooks have been updated. And also, this has been published to our website, so families who are interested in visiting or observing now have a guide of how to go about that process.
Very good. Thank you. And moving along, we have audience sharing, opportunity to share. Quiet this evening? Nothing at all?
No, it's not so bad.
Leave us in suspense till next sun. We'll be here.
Okay.
Look at that, see, it worked. The seltzer is halfway gone.
All right, I'll be fine. On behalf of the Free Full Day Kindergarten Group-
Suzie is part of as well. I want to thank the, I want to thank Superintendent Martino and the school committee for following through on the budget goal that was just discussed and beginning the transition to Free Full Day Kindergarten. We have a lot of parents who have come to us, very thankful for the beginning of this transition and hoping that the transition will be shorter rather than longer. But they certainly appreciate the work and you're really listening and implementing something that the parent community really, truly wanted. And so, thank you so much, and we look forward to continuing to work with you, and you'll be seeing us around.
Thank you. Good to go.
Catchers?
Yep, we will go around the rest of the audience.
So we've been very busy at progress. September went by extremely fast. In October, promises to be just as busy. The number of virtual activities and events coming in. We kicked off our fun run this past weekend, Friday. There may or may not have been some cameos by a school committee member and some of the audience. We had some friends make a video of Waddles training for the fun run, which was very fun. The kids loved it. There was lots of conversation Monday about how fast can Waddles run? So we're looking forward to our fun run on October 18th to raise money for, through the PTO, to support some of our endeavors at the school level. Mass Audubon is coming tomorrow for our entire school, and they're going to be doing workshops on waste recycling and reusing. And that's connecting to some green teamwork that we want to reboot this year with some of our grade levels. We're very excited Peter Reynolds is coming on October 15th, and that's in collaboration with the Peaslee School. So Peter and his brother Paul are going to be coming and working with our entire school and then doing a workshop with one of our grade levels and then transitioning over to Peaslee to do some similar work there. We also are going to be diving into STEM at the end of the month, and we're having a fall STEM day, which will incorporate hands-on activities as well as technology components. So we're busy planning that right now. We have some great ideas from the staff and looking forward to getting that going, as well as our PTO Halloween party at the end of the month, which is always a good time. And we also launched our second step work this week with our students, which is focusing on social emotional learning. And we launched with ready-to-learn behaviors. So our focus this week is on listening and how to be an active listener in all parts of our school community. So lots happening, busy month ahead of us.
Zee's also been very busy. We did host our first Zee Walk to Bike to School. Had about 45 students and families participate in that, so that was nice to see. The Harmony Brigade also came. They do a convention every year in the area, and they call schools and ask if they can come in and have some time to sing to the students and teach them about kind of the barber shop model. So that was fun to have that. We kicked off S-October this week with a whole school assembly. So we'll be partnering with Northborough Youth and Families and donating not only socks this year, but hats, mittens, and gloves to keep our families warm during the winter. Last year, we raised over 1,200 pairs of socks, so we're shooting for at least 1,500 this year. The kids are excited about that, and we end that drive with a Crazy Sock Day that commemorates that. We're also looking, partnering with the PTO to do a food pantry drive in the next month. We have a kindness tree that we put in our main hallway, and all of the individual classrooms are working on a kindness project. And the students will either write an act of kindness that they've engaged in or that they saw a classmate engage in. And our PTO helps cut out all the leaves and apples and things to hang on the tree, so that'll be nice once that's all put together. Some upcoming events with STEM Week happening. We have STEM activities in collaboration with the high school and also a community partner. We have a PTO member who works for a STEM company, so she's also bringing some events into the building, as well as a bullying prevention. Assembly will be happening in early November from Mark through Bridgewater, so that'd be nice.
Thank you.
Lincoln Street School. For as long as I can remember, since I've been a teacher, I've always wished for it to be October. The beginning of the year is always super crazy, and then it seems to settle in come October, so here we are. Things have been going great at the school. The kids are settling into the routines, great things happening in the classroom. Everyone seems happy and engaged, and it's just nice to see things just kind of going along. We also had the New England Harmony Brigade. I echo what Amy said about Mark, also coming in early November for Lincoln Street School. This is a big month for our PTO, where we have our LSS Fun Day coming up on the 26th, so hopefully people can join us. That's a huge event for the Lincoln Street School and the PTO. We have a kindergarten field trip coming up to the Berlin Orchards and our Halloween Parade and our visit to Whitney Place in Beaumont coming up as well. We're looking forward to having a great one.
Excellent, thank you.
So at Peaslee School, we recently had a visit from historical perspectives. Each year, they, the PTO brings someone in, and they have a person who role plays an important person from history, and this year it was Eleanor Roosevelt. So the children really were very excited about that. We kicked off the year with an all-school meeting. The theme right now is acceptance. We'll be doing another all-school meeting on October 11th. On this one, we'll be celebrating students who are being recognized for doing something that shows acceptance. So for example, I was in the kindergarten classroom a few days ago, and a little girl invited me to come sit with her and a classmate during snack time, and she said, "I noticed that my friend was sitting alone, so I came over and sat with her." And I said, "Well, that's a great example of, you know, including-" And I said, "Well, that's a great example of, you know, including somebody else and being a good friend," and she was very proud of herself, and for good reason. So that was kind of exciting to see those kinds of messages are really getting through and children are noticing somebody who might need a friend on a particular time. We are working with Julie Doyle to invite Algonquin Regional High School students to come and visit us during STEM Week, so we are very excited about that. Our third and fourth grade classes will be going on field trips soon. And on October eleventh, if you happen to have any free time, you are more than welcome to come join us. At one o'clock in the afternoon, our grades three, four, and five will be doing their annual ed camp, which, if you recall from previous years, that involves having a variety of adults, including parents and community members, as well as teachers and staff, who run different sessions of interesting things that one might not necessarily always do in school. So we've had things, you know, everywhere from making goo and slime to going out and using metal detectors and playing kickball and everything else, learning Hebrew, all kinds of different activities. So the teachers are working on creating a list of interesting things to do, so you are more than welcome to come and join us and do something fun. As Alana mentioned, on October fifteenth, we have our author visit with Peter and Paul Reynolds. We did do some things with DOT Day. We have lots of dots hanging around the school, kids expressing their artistic sides with all kinds of dots, so we're pretty excited about that. And on October thirty-first, we will be hosting our annual Halloween Parade, so hoping that the weather stays good and the mosquitoes stay away.
Good meaning cold.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight degrees.
Sunny and cold.
There you go.
No snow, no rain.
For four hours, twenty-eight degrees for four hours.
Then you can go back to be warm.
I'm with you.
Principal Carb?
So we have a lot going on at Melikan as well. It's hard to believe that October is here, and our parent-teacher conferences are coming up, October twenty-second and twenty-fourth. So I just can't believe that we're here. But anyway, we have a lot of clubs that have started up recently. Lots of students are after school for that hour, engaging in all sorts of things. Our school council is starting up, and we are partnering with two students from Trotter who started something called Give Back with a Snack. And they collect snacks, wrapped snacks, that kids are not eating, rather than having them throw them away. There's a, our student council's going to be collecting, and we're going to be donating those to the food pantry. Jeanette Morgan, who's on our PTO, also contacted the food pantry to see if they would take things like fruit that is not damaged, and they will. So we're going to be trying to reduce our waste while also contributing to the local food pantry, so we're excited about that. Lots of things going on. Jazz band and stage band have started up, Boys and Girls Chorus, all of our musical groups. We have so many clubs, Anime Club, Minecraft, Chess Club, Kindness Club. There's something for everyone, and it's exciting, especially to see the sixth graders after school engaging and meeting new students, but our seventh and eighth graders as well. And it's hard to believe, but our eighth graders are visiting Algonquin this month, and then those who are interested will be visiting Assabett. So as we are transitioning in our sixth graders, we are helping our eighth graders think about next year, so it's exciting.
Have you memorized all one hundred and fifty-three sixth grader names yet?
No.
We'll give you a few more weeks.
Stone used to have, with that. I would know half of them.
That makes sense, actually.
I know their faces.
That's a good start. Thank you.
I will do my monthly, excuse me for my voice, I will do my monthly update for the NSAC group. Actually, it's tomorrow night, I believe. October third, they have Massachusetts Anti-Bullying Law, IEP, and school-wide strategies to prevent bullying of students with disabilities. And that's going to be at the Floral Street School Media Center in Shrewsbury, and it's at six-thirty PM. They asked for RSVPs by the first, but I'm sure if you're interested in attending that and you contact them, I'm sure they would be able to accommodate you if there's space available. October eleventh is their general meeting. It's going to be at the Southborough Library at ten AM, and there's going to be some District Student Support Services Administration is going to be attending that meeting. October sixteenth, they are having, at the Northborough Library, it is Autism and Insurance: What Families Need to Know, is presented by Terry Farrell, the Project Director of Autism Insurance Resource Center at UMass. And RSVPing is required for that also, to their email address, and it's six to eight PM. And then November fourth, Basic Right to Transition Planning for AEP students ages fourteen to twenty-two is presented at the Northborough Library, six to eight PM also. And all their information can be found on their website.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say to Jen and Michelle, thank you for the tours a couple of weeks ago. Something that really impressed me was your outdoor learning spaces. So hopefully, once the mosquito issue resolves, they can be used once again. I thought that was really great, especially you just see kids light up when they're outside. They could be doing, you know, the most mundane task, but if they're outside, it's really cool. So I hope that you guys get to use that more. And Give Back with a Snack, the school that I work for, actually just adopted that as well. And it was pretty cool to hear that it started, I believe, in Southborough, so our sister community.
Two Trotter students, they're twins, they actually started it, and they are trying to spread to as many schools as possible. And they came and presented to me and Jeanette Morgan, and they were just fantastic, so.
That's wonderful. Love the community connection. Wow, excellent. Thank you.
I'm good. So we have three items. The first, there are two upcoming forums that will help parents and children learn about the potential dangers of vaping, so more toward our middle school folks. The first forum is actually tomorrow evening from six-thirty to eight-thirty at the Millpond School in Westborough, and one of the panelists will be Dr. Sapdar Medina, who is a pediatrician at UMass Memorial, and he's also our district physician. The second opportunity is in Shrewsbury. It's the Shrewsbury Coalition for Addiction Prevention and Education, and Dr. Ruth Poty, a nationally renowned expert, she did speak at the high school last year, will discuss brain development and teen risk-taking, and how it impacts alcohol, vaping, and substance use. And that is from six-thirty to eight PM on November twenty-first, and both of those events are listed on our district website. And on a more positive note, just a reminder, if community members are interested in joining our ten schools, three districts, one community of readers, October twenty-eighth, folks are welcome to join us at the Algonquin JFK Auditorium. The book is The Gift of Failure by Jessica Leahy, and it's going to be an opportunity to engage in conversation, network, and meet other parents. And then on March twenty-fifth, the author will be doing a keynote speech for us, so more information will come out about that in the next several months.
Excellent. All set? Good? Okay. That brings us to, we have distribution on the personnel items. Just distribution there.
Just distribution.
Okay. And no communications at this time. We do have some future agenda items. Looks like Ms. Soles will be in the hot seat.
Three Mike Seltzer, or you?
Just let me know ahead of time if someone?
Or three.
And it looks like we're getting some, are these central office presentations?
Yes, so Jennifer Suker will be here for our K ELL presentation, and Julie Doyle will be here for our K Technology STEM update.
And Rhoda will be there in spirit.
She'll be a judge.
Judging. And budget goals should be revisited.
Yeah, we'll put that back on there.
Anything else? Requests, future discussion? All right. Well, that completes the agenda for the open meeting, and I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. You can?
Sure.
Read it from there.
I move to adjourn and move to executive session to discuss, excuse me, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with no intent to return to open meeting.
I second that motion.
Okay.
We need a vote?
We'll need a roll call. I just realized, we didn't do a roll call on the revised FY nineteen. Does that?
We do need a roll call.
Okay. We still have an opportunity right now, since we are?
We've been quite adjourned.
Just seconds, seconds away.
So. Let's, no, I'll recap. We had, we had a motion that was also seconded to accept the FY nineteen budget as revised and presented this evening. And so unless there's any additional discussion about that, I will do a roll call for. Okay?
Yes.
All right, so, all those in favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Good catch. Got the B team tonight, it's my first chair. Better late than never. All right, so we need a roll call for the motion to enter, to adjourn open meeting and enter into an executive session.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, open meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.